All the meeting to order for discussion of boards and commissions and council. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Marla.
Crowsey.
Here.
Special. Miller. Pullman.
Here.
Present four.
Deb, I just want to make sure, did you get a copy of this?
No. Thank you.
Oh, I got a few more if needed to.
So, this is a follow-up to our discussion and direction to city manager and staff regarding alternates ordinance and here's your council, the creation of the diversity and inclusion commission, as well as other items that council may want to discuss related to boards and commissions. Does anyone have an add to that? Those items? So, first up would be the alternates ordinance. I think that's on our agenda for later.
Not this evening. It's just, I used today's date on the draft just because I have to put a date on our format. But the, basically what the alternates ordinance at the draft says is, with the exception of the police and fire commission and library board, which are limited by statute, you would be able to, the mayor would appoint, subject to council approval, same as any other appointment, up to two alternates to any border commission for the city of Oshkosh. It doesn't require them to be appointed, but it would provide that option and we don't have to individually bring each border commission and authorize alternates for it. So, it would not remove anybody from a border commission. It would basically carry them through whatever, if somebody's appointed as an alternate right now, they would stay on as the alternate and regardless of the term from their, once their new appointments come up, alternates would be two-year terms then.
Okay, even though they have...
Even though the board may have...
Terms has three years, two years.
The board may, board members may have a three-year term or a, you know, whatever. Alternates will just always have a two-year term.
Okay.
It was just for simplicity's sake.
And I think that's similar to the one, for example, for council liaisons as well, regardless of the...
Right.
Right.
And I didn't, I didn't hear a lot of negative comments and so I talked to the city attorney and just, we wanted to give it to you so that if it looks like it's in, if it's acceptable to you, we'll put it on next agenda for, for council approval. I, I haven't heard anything, in fact, I haven't heard anything but positive comments about this and, and even discussing with staff, I think they felt that the alternates were probably amongst the more reliable attendees, so I think it's kind of a testament to their conscientiousness about wanting to serve. So, there's, there seems to be a lot of positive feedback that we've also heard and I, I know that the mayor has talked to board and commission chairs and gotten similar feedback.
Yes. I did meet with, the quarterly meeting was on July 9th and there was nothing but favorable comments. Some obviously of those already have them, you can see that on the sheet that staff prepared, the ones that already have them. And then, as Lynn said, it would not apply to police and fire commission and what was the other?
Library board.
Board of zoning appeals, no, we do have two alternates for that one.
Yes.
I believe the statute provides for that one as well. So, you'll see the ones on this chart, the ones that currently don't have an alternate identified would have the ability to, to include two alternates. And, I mean, I, from my standpoint, I think it's fairly well laid out, so if that's council's direction, we'll put them...
Yeah, well, the nice thing about having alternates is if, if a board member for one reason or another health or says he's had enough, he or she or they, that we have people that are up to speed that can fill, fill right in. You know, because it can sometimes be hard to fill, you know, board positions or even get new people on boards and commissions because a lot of people like the committee they serve on and ask to be renewed. We very seldom remove anybody if they ask to stay on, so alternates give them that opportunity to stay engaged and, and get involved. So, I, even though I first said maybe we just need them on boards, commissions that have budgetary implications so that we always have a quorum, but if we have enough people to put them on all boards, I guess it doesn't matter to me.
And again, it allows for it. If you don't have enough people, it doesn't require it.
Right.
Yeah, the more, the better. I mean, the more people that want to be engaged in the community, the better the community is going to be.
Sure.
But I will say that there's been somewhat of a chilling effect in terms of applications coming in since the initial rush where we had many applications coming in after our last round of alternates were not approved, there have been two. So, just an FYI, but that kind of, I guess, brings us to, are we okay with going forward with this? Is there anybody that, that sees an issue with, obviously, we have several openings right now. That includes, I think, one alternate on board of zoning appeals, long-range finance and landmarks. Is down an alternate, I believe, as well. And there is a pending application for the open seat on parks board, so that's where things stand at this point. Oh, public arts is also missing, I believe, an alternate as well. So, are we okay with giving direction to put that on the next agenda then?
Yeah. Very well. Because I think we've already, you know, we had already discussed, the last time we had the workshop and we made some changes with consolidating a few boards. We didn't eliminate any boards, but we consolidated, I guess you could say.
We consolidated parking and traffic. And Grand Opera House with landmarks.
Right.
Okay. Then, everybody got copies, I believe staff sent, 2016 report on the study of the diversity coordinator, as well as the study from the boards and commissions, but I think the, not that we are discussing specifically a diversity coordinator, but the direction that was given to city manager for establishing or creating a citizens committee is in that report. Let's see here, page six, reference human relations council as a former committee?
Yep.
And maybe you can talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. You know, as part of the, the study, we took a look at what some other communities had done and a number of communities have created different types of councils or committees and they, they go by many different names, but it also came out that we had a human relations council. And if, appendix D is really what that ordinance was at the time. Now, again, that was from 1989, so I think things have progressed quite, quite a bit since, in the last 30 years. Other communities have, they've called it different things, but I think the intent is, is roughly the same. How do we, how do we become a more welcoming and inclusive community? And that's, that's really what we've seen with several communities that have created these committees. And even communities that created a diversity coordinator position typically reference a committee that was the genesis of it. And so, that's why I offered that up as an option, because maybe that would be a, a way to at least begin the discussion on a more formal level. You could even do that on an ad hoc group, which is what I initially suggested in the study. The reason we didn't take any action at the time was, is council said, well, let's take a look at our boards and commissions, because we got an awful lot of boards and commissions and can we trim those numbers back? And we did buy two. I mean, even though they were done through consolidation, we have two fewer boards and commissions. So, you could have an ad hoc committee to look at best practices with or without an expectation that you create a permanent committee after that, but...
So, is, is what you provided us in our stuff, you're saying we don't any longer have a human relations council, which was approved way back in April of 89?
I believe it was around...
Did a future council eliminate that?
Yeah, and it was really because they, there were no issues brought before it.
Okay.
Now, I think back then, it was if there were complaints, but there's a qualitative issue with this as opposed to a quantitative, there's a substantive issue, and I think there was, there were no formal complaints raised, so the committee didn't have a purpose. I think the idea nowadays is to talk about what can we do to be, to have a discussion about issues and how more qualitative things we could do to be more welcoming and inclusive rather than waiting for a formal complaint, really rather been reactive to it, be a little more proactive.
That's, I will say that at the Highway 41 Initiative Regional Meeting, a couple weeks back, the number one issue that everybody came out of that, even though the, the grant that got that initiative going had ended, the talent council is the shared concern up and down, you know, from Lake to Green Bay. And part of that discussion centered around, not specifically just diversity issues, but that attraction and retention, which is not a new concept that we discussed before. And I think the other piece of this is, it goes to our strategic plan where, you know, under our enhanced effectiveness of city government, the future state specifically says that we will, you know, employ employees, but there's also enhanced local engagement, strengthen partnerships and collaboration in the diversity groups, public and private. So, it, it makes sense for us to bring this back, as Ms. Roloff was stating. I did speak to several other mayors in the community and I believe Manitowoc was the most recent one to create a diversity committee. I did speak with Karen Nelson in Appleton, Mary Hannah, she's the diversity and inclusion commission designee there. A little bit different scenario, but they had been reached out to by Justin Nicholas from Manitowoc. So, also Mayor Eli in Wauwatosa. Now, the differences are going back to what Ms. Roloff said. In one situation, it was more in response to perhaps some incidents, which is not the position we want to be in. In another scenario, it's more of a proactive manner to engage and some of the matrix points that were brought up on the diversity coordinator study would potentially be addressed through committee. The other issue is a resolution that came out by the Wisconsin Health, Public Health Association declaring a crisis, public health crisis. I also met with diversity resilient director Kathy Flores, who is the former diversity coordinator from Appleton, heading up that initiative in reference to LGBTQ inclusion. Our impediments for housing choice, sites and equities since 2012. So, those are some of the things I think that bring this back to a more timely discussion. So, I'd be interested in hearing what council, what council thoughts are about implementing that diversity committee.
Was this ordinance that you're referring to, Ms. Marlonson, is that, is that an empty ordinance? Availability, section 2 dash 1, 13.5? That's what it was? Looking at...
That's what it used to be.
Okay.
Yeah, that, when that was done, it was probably codified a couple times over, so there's, there's a section in the code available if you want to...
Okay. I guess the only thing I'm thinking is we already have kind of a, a copy of what a human relations or human diversity council would be. Biggest one would be to make sure that chancellor would be willing to be on it, because it says the mayor, under composition terms, the council shall consist of the mayor and the chancellor of the university and such other members as the mayor and chancellor shall jointly appoint. Members shall serve for an indefinite term, so we may want to tweak some of that language.
Certainly.
You know, obviously, you know, but then it talks about, you know, in parent C, the council may adopt rules for its government procedures, or means directed by the council, such means should be doing properly noticed, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, if that's direction we want to go, I guess we could work off of this already because it's, was approved way back in 1989, April 6th, first reading, April 20th. Pretty much covers what we're thinking, I would think.
The only thing is I, I'm not seeing in here, Lynn, the number of appointees.
I'm really sorry, but I didn't work on that in '89. I wasn't...
Grab city manager.
The purpose of putting that in there was just to show that there was a history of having it. I wouldn't necessarily recommend this setup. I think the fact that we've got, you know, a good stable of boards and commissions, it would be similarly conceived. You know, the mayor appoints, not necessarily other people appointing. In fact, I forgot all about the fact that the chancellor had any role in this, but I, I don't think the chancellor got very involved, which was part of the reason this thing fell off. Clearly, the university has taken on diversity and inclusion by themselves. Part of this is to identify best practices. Would we want to encourage participation from the university? Absolutely. They're working on this stuff. They're, they're probably a great resource if, if we want to use them, but I think it would be identifying best practices that we ourselves would, would want to implement, both internal to our organization as well as, you know, where do we, where do we go beyond the borders of our city hall? Or, you know, that's more of a figurative term, but you know, where do we want to go in terms of encouraging diversity and inclusion? One of the things I think the mayor said that, that I think resonates very well from our trip to Dubuque, when we met with the inclusive Dubuque folks, they responded to an incident. I don't think we want to get ourselves in a situation where we're responding to an incident. It's much better to proactively discuss this issue. I think there is some, some value to having this as a retention, attraction and retention issue for, for our business community, and I think there are many businesses in the community that are interested in, in having a community-wide discussion. Ms. Benke attended, along with the mayor, the, the event put on by Oshkosh Corporation.
Yes.
Real Eye opening event and appreciated, and Chief Stanley went as well and got good, got great feedback from, from everybody there. So, how we put our own little stamp on it is really up to the council and the, the folks that you would ask to participate if we were to create such a committee.
Do we know in 1989, when they passed the ordinance, if it actually went through and they, I mean, it went through, but did they actually have a committee? Did they form one?
It lasted about 15 years.
Okay.
And then it died for lack of activity, because it was, it seemed from what I saw, it was more reactive.
Mm-hmm.
And if we didn't get a complaint, we never had a meeting. We didn't have a meeting... Do you have some recollection?
I do.
You do? Great.
So, it actually, its charge changed over the years. So, a lot of the, the Martin Luther King event that you see every year at the university was originally a collaborative event between the university and the human relations council. So, I think its definition of what it was meant to do changed over time, so I think it wasn't meeting its, its original form of what it meant, but they were, that council was very much involved in, in naming who that diversity award winner was every year for many years. So, so I don't, my question was, when did, when did this committee cease to function? Because I'm not sure it has. It just hasn't been utilized.
My recollect, I wasn't, the purpose of the meeting wasn't to discuss this report, but it was, it was eliminated. I just can't tell you when. Yeah. And it was because of lack of...
So, I would just, I would say that, yeah, there is a period of where I think there was a lack of interest in, in these types of issues and a lot of people probably didn't know where to go as well, but I, I know that they were very much involved in creating those Martin Luther King events or diverse, diversity events before their, before the university was, had taken this up as a, as a much bigger issue to them.
I just wanted to add a couple of points. Like, I mean, I give the city kudos for 1989. I mean, that's a long time ago and culture's changed a lot and we preach about diversity and inclusion. The people that would be interested in this would bring a whole nother type of person to, to these boards and commissions. A lot of people might not be interested in cer, certain things, but they might be interested in this and we get that inclusive nature included. And I mean, I looked at the schools, one in four kids are people of color now, so I mean, there's a more of a voice nowadays and I think this is a good platform to, to do something like this where maybe, even though there was issues back then, there wasn't as many people here, so now we have more of a voice and actually take up some of these concerns that have never left.
The, the one thing that I wanted to say too and was, you know, the thought of a lot of these committees or positions being created because of issues that exist in our Let's just, let's just think for, for real here that these issues actually exist in our community already and maybe we're just not responsive to them. Maybe we don't see them, maybe we're just learning to understand them, but I don't, I don't want to sit around the table thinking that, that these issues don't exist already. And so, creating this committee gives us an avenue, or whatever this form or shape or position or whatever this might be, gives us the avenue to be able to look at it more proactively, that we're not waiting for this issue to blow up in our community, is that we are going to take a proactive stance and create something that can help address this when these issues, you know, come forward, so that they can be pointed in a certain direction or the community can talk about it in a, in a conversational perspective to find some type of common goals to that. So, my point is, let's not wait for, to have to be a response to an issue.
And I, I guess I would just point out too, that in that 2016 study, there was a suggestion of, if it was created for the purpose of identifying best practices, there could be, I guess, a clause in there that it's not necessarily expected to be in perpetuity. It could be, once the committee worked on those best practices, perhaps it wasn't necessarily needed beyond that, and it would be up to us to, I guess, make that determination.
If you take a look at the last paragraph of section three on page six of the report, it was, it was kind of suggesting that, that council may consider the creation of an ad hoc committee to identify those best practices with no expectation of committee, of continuing the committee's work after best practices are created. Ad hoc committee doesn't have the permanency of a citizens committee, however, the work of an ad hoc committee may set the stage for a more permanent solution, so, including the creation of a position. So, you could go an ad hoc committee, see where it goes, see if it has a place, if you're comfortable, pleased with the progress it's making. If not, then you just thank them for their work and move on with that too. It really gives you the flexibility to do those things and that's why I think at the time, we were trying to give you kind of a menu of, of options that you could, you could choose from.
So, start with a possible ad hoc committee, give them a purpose, and then, depending on how long that takes and/or the results of that work, either turn them into a permanent sitting committee or just abandon them and abandon that ad hoc. That's what you're...
That's, that's cert, that was what that, that paragraph was intended to suggest. I mean, it's a, depends on how, how deep you want to dip your toe in the pool.
And how would the selection of the ad hoc members?
I think that would be just like a council committee, you know, mayor...
But now, keep in mind, for example, with rental housing advisory board, council got a little more specific in what areas of the community we wanted to try to represent on that. I think there was, in the ordinance, that we recommended, you know, persons from the tenant community, from the landlord community, from agencies impacted, and there's certainly an opportunity for us to get a little more prescriptive.
I think if there's interest in this, enough people will come out of the woodwork where we're going to have a great selection of people to pick from, of every kind of background. So, maybe, maybe that would eliminate the whole idea of having a criteria.
But the idea too of including, I think, part of some of the work or discussions done by the former mayor, mayor and some university personnel that are no longer there, also talked about involving other community leaders at, you know, the school board, university. I believe one of the hospitals was part of that discussion, so certainly, again, we could potentially with Lynn's blessing, get a little more prescriptive, but I don't think we want to get so prescriptive that we can't fill the spots either.
Right. Well, I think that's the key thing. I think before we even, I guess, we, we can agree to form a committee or an ad hoc committee. We really need to figure out what the charge is for them. There's a purpose for them, so that when an applicant does put in, they know what they're, what their, I guess, role is or what we're asking them to do on behalf of the city.
Yeah, we're identifying, we're asking them to identify the best practices. So, if you look here, again, as Ms. Roloff indicated, best prac, best practices as it relates to diversity and inclusion and as it relates to our strategic plan and, and have that, you know, succinctly tie in to what we're trying to accomplish in the strategic plan.
Could the ad hoc committee kind of talk about what their purpose would be to and maybe bring that back to the council?
They could come up with advisory items and suggest things to us that perhaps we hadn't, it hadn't occurred to us.
Because maybe the people that are the leaders aren't really the best people to get the actual information from. Sometimes it's people in the trenches that are dealing with these issues on a day-to-day basis as who they are as people.
I would certainly expect that we would have citizenship dissipation. That would be my expectation as well.
And specifically, you know, just who will be appointing the people that go in the ad hoc group? I think city manager Roloff, you mentioned, well, us somewhere down here. Is it you? Is it us? Just the mayor? I remember the last, the last ad hoc group we had was probably the special events one. I think where you, I think you appointed those individuals. I don't know if council, I wasn't on council, but I don't know if council had any input on that at all, so just wondering specifically, so the makeup of that group.
I envision this because it's very policy oriented, that it would be appropriate that the council would approve mayor role appointments similar to other boards and commissions. Even though it's an ad hoc committee, I think the, the nature of this is that you want to have a more engaged, this is more than just helping, you know, develop a draft policy. This is, this is community-wide, you want to do that. What I would do is I would reach out to many of the communities that were cited in this report and take a look at what those, those communities had done and kind of take the best of all of those and work with the mayor on bringing something forward for the, for the council to consider.
Okay.
Generally, would you like us to work on putting together a draft for, for your consideration on an ad hoc?
Sure.
Okay. Happy to do that. Thank you.
Another item deputy mayor and I spoke about was in... Another item Deputy Mayor and I spoke about was in relation to, generally speaking with the boards and commissions, whether or not council wanted to entertain an idea of term limits for our boards and commission members. And that can take a variety of forms. We didn't really get too specific on it. It was just a, did council want to look at that?
Yeah. General conversation the mayor and I had was to, you know, do we want, so that we don't have thirty-year people on certain boards or commissions? Do we want to limit the, you know, to two terms or three terms? And that discussion also then went to, should we have term limits for council members? City of Green Bay has done that. Ten years, that's as long as you can serve, then you have to be off for at least one term. So, you know, my feeling is if we decide to do term limits on our boards and commissions, then it should also be the same for the council. If we're going to have our citizens only serve so many terms. Now, it doesn't mean that if you're on one, say, the bid board, I'm just throwing that out there, or let's take a different one. Say the plan commission, that's three years. Okay? So if you can be on it, re-up for three terms, let's just say nine years, can they go on another board or commission after that? Sure, I would think so, if they have an interest.
My opinion with the term limits for the boards and commissions, we don't have a lot of interest already for them. And maybe there's not a pool outside of that to even say, okay, you get two terms and then there's nobody to replace them. With the council, I mean, I think it might be a good idea because I think a lot of people don't run because they're intimidated because we have a three, four, or five-term person on council, that they have no chance of beating them potentially, so they don't run. And I think through this whole getting somebody a replacement, one more, you got the mayor. I mean, we had a big, huge pool of people come up and there's great people. Plenty of them would have been great on council. I mean, I think council term limits might be an idea to go through, but the boards and commissions, I don't think there's enough people out there that actually want to be on the boards and commissions.
I guess I look at it differently. I think the citizens determine when somebody's term is up on council. That's an elected position versus an appointed position. So I think as far as council, that's up, that's up to the citizens to decide. When it comes to the appointments, I could go either way. There's a school of thought that we haven't had, an enormous amount of applicants to serve on boards and commissions. On the flip side too, we do have a number of people that have served for quite a while. And I know with other boards, sometimes they'll have like a two or three year, or two or three term limit, and then they're required to step off for a year and then they can reapply. So I don't know what the right answer is there, but I do think appointing and electing is two very, very different topics.
Well, I guess it'll be my turn. No. No, I, Councilmember Allison Osby basically hit my thoughts right on the head as well, almost in lockstep, that there are term limits for elected officials. They're called elections. And if the people see fit, then that's their choice and that's their right to, through the democratic process. But with the boards and commissions, you know, I wouldn't mind it. It would, through the last several months and through the last, the process of appointments and going through the, this last May and June, you know, creating openings does create some interest, or did create some interest. We had some applicants. And maybe having openings does generate other applicants to come forward. It's possible. Or it's all of our responsibility to encourage people to apply as well. So when there are just natural openings, it might be more advantageous. It might help us to have those openings. I could go either way on it, but I can definitely see that it's definitely a possible positive to create a limit on how many terms for a board member.
So what's too long? I mean, is there, is there a number that we, that we could put out there that's too long for hypothetically for our councilperson or even a committee member?
Well, let's take it a step further. I agree with you, Bob. And I mean, how many people are on these boards and commissions now that are going to be over that number when we pick a number? I mean, so there's, there's some instant ramifications from our decisions here today, so...
Yeah, you know, I agree. And I, I kind of agree with what everybody's saying is, you're right. I mean, if someone's, you know, years of experience sometimes on certain boards, commissions is invaluable. We all know that because of what they can bring to the board or commission. And some of these, it takes a good year or two to even get up to speed of what their role really is as a board member. So I'm, it was just a discussion the mayor and I had. I'm not supportive one way or the other. I don't believe term limits for council members because again, that is, I agree with both councilmember McGraw and Allison Osby about the fact that it is the citizen's choice to say, you've been on long enough for whatever and we want change, so. But boards and commissions, I think that the citizen is engaged, we don't have any issues, the chairs of the committee aren't asking for the people to be removed, they wish to continue to serve, we should let them continue to serve and not take them off just because they've been on one term, two terms, or three terms.
And the feedback that, and the feedback that I received during the last six months was that a number of people had been discouraged from applying because they felt that, because some people had been on for so long, there was not a chance to have a turn. And, you know, that's, that's just a cooling effect for, for those applications. So I think that, you know, I hear both sides of this, but I, I think that, you know, it would be important for us to, you know, choose a thoughtful number if we were to go that direction. Not necessarily, you know, two or three terms. Maybe it's, you know, ten years, you know, collectively, if that fit within, because some of the boards are three-year spots. So it would be difficult to, you know, just give that specific number, apply to all.
But why isn't they, they didn't apply because there wasn't an opening?
No, it was, so I would say out of probably, I want to say eight people that I had spoken with who had been discouraged for various reasons, they, they felt that the spots had been held, you know, for a significant period of time. And, and so it was somewhat discouraging to apply and not hear back because there wasn't an opening. The other thing that we have done and as of today, I did ask Diane to make sure that we, our staff to make sure that we have those spots that are open, like current, because I think for a period of time, it only showed like long-range finance in the stormwater. And, and that wasn't an accurate reflection of what the openings were. So if somebody came to that boards and commissions page and they saw, oh, those are the only two, and I don't qualify, or that's not my thing. So there were a combination of things, but they felt that because some had sat on boards and commissions for so long, that it limited the options for application. So we have about seventeen minutes left, or ten minutes left, really. Is this something that we want to revisit? Or, because there's one other item that we need to address.
I guess I'm not, I'm not necessarily fully satisfied that we've come to any type of consensus on whether term limits are something we want to not do or do. I'm actually interested in the conversation, further conversation about it. I'd actually like to know more about other communities that have term limits on council members, because I don't...
No, not council. We're talking about boards and commissions. I know it was brought up, but this was specific to boards and commissions.
I'm open to both.
Okay.
Partially because I think, I think it's interest, I think it's an interesting component that creates opportunities to shape how decisions are made. Let's, let's just say, for instance, plan commission has had someone on, on a plan commission for twenty years, which is not unlikely, I think. People tend to stay longer on the plan commission. And there's a certain background that needs to be kind of considered in that. But at the same time, we could just get a lot of the same background on that committee. And by enforcing, enforcing a term limit on that, we could shift the thought that comes onto that committee into more up-to-date practices, shifts in our strategic plan. Let's just throw this out there, addressing urban sprawl from that, from that perspective. You know, it allows for the opportunity to address things that may not get fully addressed from a citizen's perspective. I know that staff spends a lot of time talking about urban sprawl as it relates to our comprehensive plan and planning of that sort. But I think it creates opportunities for different thoughts coming to planning of how we go about our decisions. Different thoughts being brought to us as council members by, by potentially doing that.
So what I hear you saying then is you would like to see this come up at a future council meeting for more specific discussion?
I think it's, I think it's an important discussion. And it's not just a discussion that should be made by us. I think it's, I think it's a discussion that, that would be welcome to the community for them to tell us what they feel about that. So, and again, I'm also supportive of having that conversation around term limits on the council, even though we're not necessarily talking about that.
Is there anyone that has an objection to that coming up on an agenda for specifics? Just one last thing, and I don't want to spend an inordinate amount of time on it, but there was previously proposed in draft format, a mayor's youth council. After talking with a number of communities and other folks in this community, I'm proposing that we not create yet that other board and commission of, I believe it was, I don't know, eighteen to twenty-some youth, but that we look at an idea of ex officio youth appointments on the different boards and commissions so that they may have an opportunity to weigh in, not necessarily voting. And it could take a couple of different forms, either participatory, non-voting on a specific board or commission of interest to that youth, or that a group of youth similar to, for example, Oshkosh leadership.
Youth Leadership Oshkosh?
Similar to that. Instead, we would rotate through each of the advisory boards and commissions, not necessarily the quasi-judicial, as City Attorney has directed, but that they would have an opportunity to experience multiples over a year's time. The original draft had talked about three-year commitments and a number of other adults involved. And I, I would just like to see it a little more rounded out as opposed to coming up with busy work for young people.
Being similar to Youth Leadership Oshkosh, where, because currently Leadership Oshkosh has people who sit on boards and commissions, don't they?
Yep.
They, no, Youth Leadership...
I thought the adult.
Leadership Oshkosh does, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but similar to that concept, that Youth Leadership Oshkosh could participate in a similar fashion to the...
Although those are more private, sorry?
Are you talking about more of a round robin?
So either or.
That they see...
Either or. Either a deep dive interest, let's say, for example, you have a youth who applies and says, you know, I'm really all about parks. I just want to do a year on parks as an ex officio member so that they get a little deeper dive. Or someone else is interested in arts and beautification or historic preservation.
Yeah, I agree with kind of what Leadership or Youth Leadership Oshkosh is doing where they, you know, they can be on a board or commission for one year and let them pick whatever one they like, or they'll be on a couple of them. They can do that. I think that would be a great opportunity for the youth. I know the bid board, for example, or, excuse me, the Convention Visitors Bureau Board every year has someone from Leadership Oshkosh for a one-year term. And one of those people have, has already requested or has filled the permanent slot that was an opening, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's a great opportunity for them to find out a little bit what's going on. So yeah, I think it's a great idea.
So Lynn, would that require an ordinance to allow, or would that be up to each individual question?
We don't...
I could see doing it either way, honestly, because if they're not having...
Voting.
Voting or, you know, authority, I don't know if we need to include it in the ordinance, but...
But they'd be afforded the courtesy of being at the table. They could speak up.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're bringing the other, the alternance ordinance, I can whip out something quick, that would also allow the appointment of, you know, youth.
Non-voting.
Yeah. At the same time. We have three weeks, right? I'm on vacation next week, but...
I would, I would, I would not hold up the alternate. The council has been discussing that.
Right, yeah, I don't want to hold that.
Do the alternate and then I can come back with you.
True. I don't think there's any urgency here for this, for your sake, so.
Okay.
The only thing that I was thinking is, in terms of school scheduling, you know, school starts after Labor Day. I don't know if we would have enough time to do recruitment and applications and those kind of things. But typically, thirteen to eighteen-year-olds are kind of busy when school first hits. So maybe it's even a January one kind of timeframe. I mean, for implementation, if, if we go that direction.
It will be done before then. I may be able to get it for the thirteenth. I'm just, I'm on vacation next week and I'm not taking homework with me.
There may be some value, because we did have a group with Mayor Cummings where we did have a discussion with the area principals. And it may be, there may be some benefits circling back with them on this idea, because I think they're going to be a great resource to recommend people for this, to populate, to populate these groups. And I think there, there's some value to talking about that.
I don't want to rush it through just for the sake of rushing it through.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
All said.
And then, oh, sorry.
What's the process for those Leadership Oshkosh ex officios? I mean, they're not, we don't approve them. They don't, they don't come through the council. They're just...
That's why I don't think we would necessarily go through Youth Leadership Oshkosh, because that's a self-selected group with, within the chamber. I think it would be more appropriate to utilize the schools.
I did speak with some of the folks at the Boys and Girls Club too, a couple of different entities about, you know, recruitment and applications and sponsorship and that kind of thing, if we want to ask for a letter of sponsorship to accompany their application or something along those lines. And then I just, one thing that's on our agenda for the rest of the evening, I just don't know if everybody's aware of this or not, but a question did come up about, on the grid, about the extraterritorial zoning appointments. Those are statutorily required to be plan commission members. So there is a situation in which someone might end up already being on two, even though they don't meet regularly. So in case you didn't know, I don't know if...
Almost a subcommittee of the commission.
All right. It's okay.
We have ten minutes.
Motion, well, we don't need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GUB TV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org.